We would like to welcome you to the Provo Municipal Council Meeting. It's 5:33 on April 24th and we are in the City Center Council Chambers. We will begin this meeting with a roll call.
Cliff Strachan.
Gary Millen.
George Hanley.
Dave Sewell.
Kay Van Buren.
Gary Winerton.
David Harding.
Dave Connect.
George Stewart.
Thank you. This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube in Provo City Council where it will also be available for on-demand viewing. The council requests that the citizens help maintain the decorum of the meeting by turning off electronic devices, being respectful to council and others, and refraining from applauding during the proceedings of this meeting. We will begin with an opening prayer by Chief Miguel and a pledge of allegiance by Captain Armstrong. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Our dear heavenly Father, as we gather here on this beautiful evening, we give thanks for the many blessings which we have been given. We're thankful for this beautiful community, for those who strive so hard to make it a special place to live and to work. Thankful for the city council for the gift of their time and their deliberations and we pray that thy Spirit would be with them, that they might. They might have thy Spirit to be with them as they do speak about the issues that are before them tonight. We also ask a blessing upon those who are serving our community out on the streets, that they might do so safely, that they might be watched over, that they might care for one another, and that they might have thy Spirit to be with them. Again, we're thankful for this beautiful community that we share. Ask that thou would continue to bless it and do so humbly, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have, the first item of business is a presentation on the Employee of the Month. And Chad Addis is, Chaz Addis is here to do that, I hope? No.
In Chaz's absence, I'm Josh Yost, the Employee Association Secretary, and I'm happy to present our Employee of the Month for April 2018 to Brad Adams, just prior to his retirement. And as soon as I'm done, I'll turn the time over to Chief Miguel, or to, I see him every day, Kevin Paxton, to deliver a presentation about Brad and his career. And after that, I'd ask you to step down in front of the rostrum to take a picture with Mr. Adams.
It is my pleasure, and I thank our chief, Chief Miguel, for giving me this honor to present Brad Adams as Employee of the Month. I have spent a lot of time with Brad in the office, so this is kind of important to me. And it's a great pleasure because a lot of the things that I've learned have been from Brad. And for 30 years, Brad starred out as an EMT firefighter, an engineer, and a captain, and for the last nine years has worked in fire prevention as a deputy fire marshal. And it has been an honor to see him, his integrity. And that has not only been with firefighters, but with all of the employees here in the city, and the contractors, and everybody that he comes in contact with. And he is truly deserving of this. And instead of added living, because I could go on forever. So, as we talked, about 30 years of service. And one thing that's been invaluable is his knowledge in helping implement the 360 and the new CityView reporting program that the city has implemented. And he's had great knowledge in construction, and that shows when he goes out and works with the contractors and the business owners in the city. There's one more page. And as you can see, one of the funnest things is Brad has a great sense of humor, and he always makes the job fun and enjoyable. And if you've ever seen the TV series Cheers, when Norm comes in, they all yell his name, when you're with Brad and you go somewhere, that's what happens. Everybody loves his personality and enjoys working with him. And so Brad, great honor, and you truly deserve Employee of the Month. And I heard Chief Miguel say, "It's about time they recognized someone with gray hair."
What wasn't mentioned is that Brad is retiring on the 15th of May.
Thank you guys for coming. As indicated on the screen, a required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. After each such item has been presented, time to comment will be provided for all those items, for all those who wish to speak. For items that do not require a public hearing, public comment will still be taken following the presentation of the item, but will be limited to 10 minutes. At this time, 15 minutes have been set aside for open public comment period, which is intended to allow comment on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Persons who speak during this time to an item that is on the, that is on the agenda will not normally be afforded a second opportunity to speak during the comment period specific to that item. During any public comment period, each speaker will generally be limited to two minutes. Additional time may be given to individuals specifically invited to speak, such as applicants, neighborhood chairs, or others that may be representing additional persons. Please begin your comment by stating your name and city of residence. Due to noticing requirements, no formal action will be taken in this meeting on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Those that are interested in commenting may now approach the podium.
Good evening. My name's Erica Munson. I live in Sandy, Utah, and I'm representing tonight thousands of members of Mormons Building Bridges, which is a community dedicated to making Latter Day Saint homes, congregations, and communities safe and welcoming for LGBTQ people. And literally thousands of our members are residents of Utah County. Mormons Building Bridges twice-proposed and twice-rejected parade entries have featured LGBTQ veterans groups. And of course, I'm talking about the Freedom Festival. These rejected entries have included members of the armed services who for too long were denied the very liberty and equality that they were putting their lives on the line to protect. Do these Americans not deserve a place in America's biggest and best patriotic celebration? We acknowledge the right that the parade organizers in the Freedom Festival would have to discriminate against groups on the basis of their sexual orientation or gender identity if the organizers were willing to forego public funding and public resources. However, we challenge the Freedom Festival to think twice about their use of the First Amendment to keep historically marginalized groups separate and apart. Likewise, it would be contrary to the values of the Freedom Festival for the committee to claim adherence to non-discriminatory agreements while violating the spirit of those agreements by invoking technicalities that result in exclusion. When I was a little girl, Provo's Fourth of July was bigger than Christmas for me. Bigger, it began with the 21-gun salute we listened for in the morning and end with the fireworks that lit the sky at the day's end. Each event was a cherished ritual. The parade was the highlight of my day, and my grandma, Algie Egerton-Baloff, holstered the whole town, it seemed, on her lawn at 836 North University Avenue. A parade is where we connect with something bigger than ourselves. A parade is an opportunity for a community to come together. How beautiful would it be to have a Native American, a descendant of Mormon pioneers, a recent immigrant to the U.S., a child whose parent is deployed in the military, and a gay or trans young person who, as they watch the pageantry of the parade go by, think to themselves, "Look, there's a part of me out there." America's Freedom Festival has an exceptional opportunity this year and into the future to send the message that in Provo, everyone is welcomed home. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ronnie Jo Draper. I am a resident of Mapleton, Utah. I work and play in Provo. I am also the vice president of the local P-Flag chapter, which is a group that is united with LGBTQ folks, their families, their friends, their allies, to, in service of educating and supporting LGBTQ people and their families. We're particularly dedicated to making sure that families stay in unity and protecting LGBTQ folks from things like suicide and risky behaviors and, and things that would keep LGBTQ people from thriving. I, myself, am a daughter of an interracial couple. My mother was white. My father is Yurok, American Indian. At the time of their marriage, their marriage wasn't recognized as legal in all 50 states. It wasn't until 1967, after I was born, that their marriage was recognized, that their marriage was made legal in all 50 states by the Supreme Court ruling of Loving versus I understand, as a biracial woman, that, that the, that people can discriminate, that can be discriminating against my family and use ideas of traditional family, whatever that means, to discriminate against my parents. I am grateful for my grandmother, who, while she wanted to reject my father because he was an American Indian and wanted to reject that marriage, decided to go ahead and recognize it anyway. I understand that folks want to reject now my queer family, and I am not really about that. And I stand with folks who want to, to stand with others to support LGBTQ people, particularly youth. And so, thank you.
My name is Susan Kruger Barber, Provo, Utah. My family with our two boys are active in our local Mormon church. I am vice chair of the Joaquin neighborhood and I'm representing myself and Observations personally. My husband and I own our house, which is one block away from the parade route. Our driveway and parking and entire Fourth of July is deeply impacted by the parade, and, and we are taxpayers. The theme of our neighborhood is Joaquin Together. We care that everyone in our neighborhood feels loved, represented, safe, and included. We care deeply about the Fourteenth Amendment. In the current political climate, I have personally received messages from our residents concerned for their safety and for being wanted. We want everyone, no matter their background, race, or sexual orientation, to feel like they belong here. Provo's motto is "Welcome Home." We want all of the Joaquin residents to feel at home and a part of our neighborhood and our city. I come from a long line of Mormons. I'm thankful to my parents and in-laws who set the precedent, even with callings like Relief Society President, State President, Temple President, Matron, Patriarch, who choose family first regarding their gay, lesbian, and transgender children and grandchildren. I really love them and will continue this example in my personal family. The parade route is along both University Avenue and Center Street, two collector roads that border our neighborhood. Families here that I know well want all people to be represented. We are for the nondiscrimination clause to be added to the conditions of the parade. We are for our children seeing and celebrating the diversity of our beloved country, that freedom means a place for all to pursue their dreams and have representation. Please add the nondiscrimination clause to the contract regarding the festival as well as the parade. Again, we believe that everyone has a place and deserves to feel a part, that it will help alleviate risky behavior and suicidality, instead creating a stronger community with the foundation of strong American values.
Hello. My name is Rachel Harmon, and I am a business owner on Center Street along the parade route, and I'm in Supportive and Circle, marching in the Freedom Festival Parade. I co-own Harmony on, at 315 East Center Street with my mother, and we watch the parade every year from our big lawn and invite our customers to join us there. We were very disheartened with last year's decision to exclude Encircle at the final hour. I'm not the person to talk about the legal implications of the First Amendment or the conflict of public tax dollars going to a discriminatory group, although I understand these are real and important talking points. I'm here because I believe it is a moral imperative to love and sustain all of our brothers, sisters, and siblings regardless of sexual or gender orientation. Encircle has given our community a beautiful and safe place for LGBTQ teens to feel whole and connected and loved. I am confident Encircle has already saved lives and will continue to, as Utah's LGBTQ youth are in a particular danger zone for suicide. I am so thankful. As a community, we should be proud. As a business, we have supported Encircle and taught knitting to a group meeting at Encircle on a few occasions. We continue to offer our support and skills whenever they are needed or desired. Our business name is Harmony, after all, and we stand by that. Harmony can't coexist with exclusion. Fear of difference is a real thing. Love is the real liberator. I hope the Freedom Festival Committee will reconsider their exclusion and really embrace love instead of fear and see the freedom that follows. And if that doesn't happen, I hope the city of Provo will lead out with love and add a nondiscriminatory clause to their contract with the Freedom Festival.
Hello. My name is Joanna Harmon, and I live in Provo. I just want to add a few thoughts to what's already been said so well. One, one thing that I want to bring up is the, I would love to have the idea that LGBTQ people are a threat to families. I think that is incorrect. I think that people, the LGBTQ, when they go to, if they are, you know, going to church or if they hear a threat to, to the families, I think, I think that narrative needs to be destroyed. And I think real threats like poverty, ignorance, exclusivity, things like that are real threats to the family. And if, if one of the reasons to keep in groups like Encircle or Mormons Building Bridges out of the parade is to keep the parade of family values kind of parade, I think that's a false, a reason that doesn't hold up. Also, I read online that one of the reasons given to maybe keep groups like Encircle or Mormons Building Bridges out of the parade is that, well, we do, you know, it's not because of what they represent, it's because maybe they have an agenda and then we'll have to let other people with an agenda in, in the parade. And I was thinking, well, who, who, who's in the parade? Okay, we have high schools, we have banks, we have businesses. What are their agendas? When it's the parade, their agenda is to promote freedom and, and community. And I think, I don't think there's any reason that groups like Encircle or Mormons Building Bridges couldn't do the same thing. I think that entries to the parade should be judged on whether or not they promote freedom and not on political interests.
Thank you very much for your comments. We, we, okay, one more.
I'm Celeste Kennard, and I live in Provo, 160 North 400 East. I just, I just wanted to come up here and remind all of you of Kurt Peterson and what a part of this community he has played. And I was a very good friend of his. I didn't, I didn't know that he was gay, although when I found out, I wasn't surprised. But what I did know afterwards is that I missed part of him. I missed part of him. Like, an important part. A part that made him who he was, that he was hiding. And, and I'm really glad I got the chance to, to, to see it differently and to start listening differently and really paying attention to what his experience was and how, how there is discrimination. And you can't see it if it's not happening to you or to somebody that you love that's having a hard time afterwards. Anyways, I, man, I really love the Freedom Festival and American history and everything, but, you know, this is part of it. Learning about new things about people and, and really loving who people are.
Hello. I'm Brad Barber. I live in Provo, in Joaquin neighborhood, also just about a block from the parade route. I work here in Provo also. I'm a professor at BYU. And I love the Freedom Festival and I love America. I was born on the Fourth of July, so this has always been a big part of my identity growing up. Going to a parade wherever I lived was a huge part of it, and moving here in the 90s changed my perspective on what a Fourth of July parade could be. I brag to my friends and family outside of Provo about what an amazing parade this is, and I'm grateful for it. And I'd also just like to express my support for having a nondiscrimination clause added to this contract. I think, I can't imagine a better expression of freedom and the values that we all share, regardless of how you feel about more specific political issues. It just seems like such a great celebration and a great idea. I echo what Celeste said about our former neighborhood chair, Kurt Peterson, unbelievable public servant in this area, in our neighborhood, that was himself gay. Family members of mine also that are gay, that I've seen sandbagging after the Mississippi River flooded, doing all sorts of public service that I know that really, to me, inspires me, is what a good American citizen is and, and should be celebrated for. So, those are my thoughts, and as our elected officials, I hope you'll consider those. Thank you.
Yes. And yes, it is available for items. We're about at the end of the time for this period, but feel free to come up.
I guess I'll stand and talk then. My name's Matt Baker. I'm actually here for another issue, but having heard what's just gone on and being aware of what's going on here, I'd like to stand and say something. I'm actually surprised that there aren't any other members of the community here to stand up for the opposite of what's been proposed here. And I'm one strongly and staunchly in favor of freedom. I don't think you'll find a stronger supporter. However, and I'm all for people having their rights and their freedoms, however, I think that, as the one girl mentioned, we celebrate in the parade different things, not who your sexual orientation is or who you like to have sex with or what your perversion is. That's not what we celebrate in parades. This other woman here tried to conflate having a biracial family is the same as being homosexual or the rest. She also called her family queer. The word queer means something. The word queer means something, and they apply it to themselves, but it's queer because it's queer. It's, it's not proper, it's a perversion, and it's not correct. So I'm fine with them having their freedoms and their right to lead their lives as they so choose. However, literally parading it around in front of people is not the proper, a proper place to have this. We don't, nobody is suggesting that we have heterosexual parades or displays out there. And I have sex with my wife, a woman. I'm not asking to have a parade out there and let everybody know who I have sex with. That's fine if you have those type of proclivities. A parade is not the place to, for, to be parading around your sexual orientation. And I'm sorry if I've been quite blunt on this, I don't have the problem of being politically correct. So I would strongly encourage, to the extent that it's legally feasible, and that's whatever, whoever's decision, that those type of displays are not appropriate for a parade. As was mentioned, schools, traditional things that we have in parades that actually are community, not what your sexual perversion is or who you like to have sex with, is an appropriate thing to be parading around in a parade. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Wayne Levitt. I'm a neighborhood vice chair here in Provo. I live basically a couple houses down from the parade route. And I just want to voice my support for the nondiscrimination clause. This gentleman who just spoke seems to believe that allowing some of these groups to participate is somehow creating their sexual activities. I think my, well, my understanding is we're celebrating our freedoms, we're celebrating their contribution to the community, we're not in any way suggesting that this is how other people, there is no sexual content in that participation, no more than the extent that me showing up with my wife and kids is an expression of some kind of sexually explicit statement. And so, anyway, I just think it's, it's really important that we allow as many, allow these people to participate in our parades, that we have a nondiscrimination clause. It's important to me that my family and that my children are aware of who their community is, who their neighbors are, and the various ways that we work together and celebrate being citizens of this, this community and this city. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. We will now move on to, to the action items and the agenda. We will handle the consent items on the agenda at this time. Consent, a consent agenda item is intended to quickly handle agenda items that may not have required further discussion because they are routine or have been fully vetted in other meetings. The first item on the consent agenda is the approval of the February 20th, 2018 council meeting minutes. Is there any discussion on that? Mr. Strachan?
You can announce all three of those and then just take it as one motion.
Thank you, I appreciate that. The item number three, an ordinance amending Provo City Code Section 6.14.080 to bring code into compliance with Utah State Code and a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit an application for Utah County Municipal Grant to be used for the Provo River Trail Ask if any, are there any council members who wish to take this item, any of these items off the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will call for a vote for the, for the items on the agenda.
Chair, you may declare them approved, adopted per, by implied consent.
Okay, thank you.
Unanimous consent, sorry.
Absence of someone requesting to take those off, we will consider those items approved We will now move to the Redevelopment Agency of Provo. Is there a motion to do that? Looking for a motion to do that. Thank you, Mr. Connect, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Van Buren, those in favor? Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think we have a presentation by Dave Walter. If Dave is here. A resolution of the governing board of the RDA approving a signature of partial assignment of a parking lease to PEG Development.
Mr. Chair, members of the Redevelopment Agency Board, good evening. The item before you tonight is asking you to partially assign parking spaces that the agency controls in the Wells Fargo parking structure to the new owners of 63 East. You may remember that in 2016, we entered into a lease agreement with Forge Development, who developed the 63 East complex, and at that time, they needed some spaces for their residential tenants in the, in the 63 East apartment complex. Forge is now selling their property to PEG Development, and PEG is wanting to use their own bank, and so they're asking the agency to consider partially assigning 55 spaces from the allotment that we had set aside for Forge Development to PEG so that the residents can maintain their parking. No other items, there would be no other items that would affect the agency board's finances or, or situation at this time. So that is staff's presentation, and I'm available for any comments or questions.
Well, do we want to ask questions? Now we're open to the public and...
I have a question.
Sure, okay.
On, on the presentation. If I heard you correctly, you said that this would be a partial assignment?
Correct. There are still, we, when Forge was contemplating the construction of 80 East, there were some, there were some additional spaces that were set aside for 80 East. PEG has opted not to buy the 80 East development, and so they're only asking for enough spaces to satisfy their requirements for the 63 East complex. So the remaining allotment out of the 120 would remain with Forge Development.
Okay, thank you.
And I understand Forge is, is looking for, you know, a partner either to buy the project from them or to complete the project, so.
Okay, so if there are no more questions, yes, Kay.
So Dave, is that 55 allotment, the same allotment as they had?
Yes.
For the 63 East?
So if there are no other questions of the council, we can open this up for the public. Are there any members of the public who would like to address this item? Seeing none, we'll bring this back to the council and look for a vote on the implied So I guess all in favor of the motion before us? Was there a question or...
Looking for, looking to Brian, that on most of, most of our items, we have implied motions. I do not see that on the Redevelopment Agency. Perhaps that's because as a council, we, we have implemented that procedure, but perhaps that hasn't been implemented by the Redevelopment Board. I, and I just, I don't know if, I mean, I'm happy with it, it sounded like...
Should we go back and do a motion?
I think that would be safer.
Better safe than sorry.
Okay, then I will look for a motion. Dave?
I move that we approve this resolution.
Okay, second by Dave Sewell. All in favor? It passes unanimously. Thank you. I'd now ask if there is no objection, we will now adjourn as the Redevelopment Agency of Provo and reconvene as the municipal council of Provo by unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Connect. A, we'll move on to item number six now, a resolution approving a substantial amendment to the 2015 five-year consolidated plan to incorporate the use of Section 108 Loan Grant Guarantee Program. And Mr. Gonzalez will present this to us.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Wintergreen. Hello, everyone. The Section 108 Loan Guarantee Program provides communities with a source of financing for economic development, housing rehabilitation, public facilities, and other physical development projects, including improvements to increase their resilience against natural disasters. This flexibility makes it one of the most potent and important public investment tools that the Department of Housing and Urban Development offers to state and local governments. The Section 108 offers state and local governments the ability to transform a small portion of their community development block grant funds into federally guaranteed loans, large enough to pursue physical and economic revitalization projects, capable of revitalizing entire neighborhoods. Such public, public investment is often needed to inspire private economic activity, providing the initial resources, or simply the confidence that private farms and individuals may need to invest in distressed areas. In previous occasions, there, there have been, there have been other public hearings presenting the use of the 108, Section 108 loan to assist in the financing of the expansion at the Provo Airport for Duncan Aviation. Duncan Aviation is a full-service corporate and private jet aircraft maintenance and service facility headquartered in Lincoln, Nebraska. Duncan Aviation approached the Governor's Office of Economic Development as early as spring of 2007, as they had shortlisted Provo as a potential candidate for the Western Regional Hub. In rather a competitive environment, Provo competed against Ogden, Utah, and Albuquerque, New Mexico. In the final analysis, Provo won out because it had a better, better firm with the Duncan corporate, better feel with the Duncan corporate culture and what Provo and the greater Utah Valley have to offer regarding quality of life, workforces, natural amenities, and the related airport facilities at the Provo Municipal Airport. The incentive package offered by the state of Utah and Provo City were important in the overall consideration, but not as the key factor. It was only later that Provo learned that at least another, one other community offered a more lucrative incentive package than Provo's. It is anticipated that Duncan will employ between 600 and 700 people, the majority of which will be local hires. Provo purchased 40 acres of land adjacent to the airport runway on the northeast area of the airport. Duncan will not own the land, but lease it from Provo City for a term of 70 years at a competitive rate. Provo will also construct a road access from Center Street to the city facility. The campus will include a number of connected large buildings, hangars, and related workspace with a total footprint of about 350,000 square feet. Amending the 2015 comp plan is required to conform to HUD laws, guidelines, and requirements. This process includes a public hearing in conjunction with a 30-day public comment period, which began on April 1st of this year, to enable the citizens, public agencies, and other interested parties to provide comment on the amendment. If you have any questions or any comments, I think that I may answer for you.
Mr. Connect.
Yeah, so in the past, we have a, I think, a fairly long history of using 108 loans to help things move along in the right direction in Provo. I don't know, the one that seems to stick out in my memory was what was Ironton Mountain Vista Business Park?
Correct.
Where we did that to put in the infrastructure?
Correct.
And I don't know if there's any others you'd like to highlight that have benefited the community?
Not aware of any others, that's the one that I also am familiar with, Ironton.
Yeah, well, that certainly has been a real blessing for the city.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. You okay? Okay. This is an item, again, it's open to a public hearing, it's a requirement for this to obtain these funds. We will now open it for public comment. Seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the council. Remind the council that this is the first time that we have heard this, and we have the opportunity to, if there's any council member that would like to wait and do it at our next council meeting, which we are actually scheduled for one, one week from tonight. Yes.
So do we, do we use that procedure or we don't necessarily approve it? I thought that was maybe just land use items.
Mr. Strachan?
Mr. Chair, it appears there's a 30-day public comment period that began April 1st, and this is just part of it. So I would assume that you, you review this again on May 1st when you meet again. Because it's the 24th day of the 30-day period.
Then we will, Mr. Harding?
So in light of that, I would like to make the motion that we continue this item until the May 1st council meeting.
Okay, second by George, and I don't care which one. No, we'll go, we better make it official, and we'll say George Henley on this one. And we will, any discussion on the motion? If not, then we will call for a vote, those in favor? Okay, that will be set for the May 1st council meeting. Now we will move to item number seven, a resolution appropriating 433,000 at the, in the Airport Capital Improvement Fund for airport parking lot utilities and access applying to the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018. Brian Torgerson will give us our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I'm Brian Torgerson, Public Services Director in the Public Works Department. All the council's seen this presentation, but for the benefit of those here who may have interest, I'll, I'll buzz through it relatively quickly. So again, corporate taxi lane 31 extension that we are proposing, actually underway, would provide for 10 additional corporate hangars at the Provo Airport, six pads would be available immediately, with four of those waiting for parking, or commercial airline parking to be relocated in order for those to be available. Again, three of those pads have already committed. Construction costs of approximately $1 million are being up fronted by two corporations. First Tac Air fronting the first portion. This portion's nearly complete, as well as their hangar is nearly complete as well. Clyde Companies would, would pick up the additional 600 feet of taxi lane and finish that in conjunction with construction of their hangar as well. They've offered to do this on a 10-year no-interest loan, which would be repaid through, through lease of, of hangar pads. Once all of these hangars are completed and committed, there is an additional revenue projected of up to $2.1 million and $40,000 annual lease revenue. Just a breakdown of the, the taxi lane costs and repayment. So the construction cost of $1 million, Tac Air frontage fee comes off the top of that, as well as Clyde's and UVU's hangars. And then lease of the three additional pads on the south side totaling $720,000 leaves us with $170,000 excess to go towards the next items that we'll be speaking about is the utilities that service those hangars. Again, just as an item of note, once those four hangar pads are available on the north side, there's nearly $1 million in anticipated revenue that would, would come into the, the... side, there's nearly $1 million in anticipated revenue that would come into the airport fund and the city funds. So, just a real quick illustration of the items of work being completed with this project. Again, corporate taxi lane 31 being extended. We also have stormwater facilities that are being completed in order to facilitate the UVU parking lot that the state legislature has funded at the airport in the amount of $800,000. Again, this is a cost not borne by the city. However, we are receiving benefit because the parking lot will service hangar tenants as well as UVU students. Some of the improvements, again, are water system upgrades to service those hangar facilities, as well as the access road to access into the parking lot, which replaces the old aviation drive being bifurcated with the taxi lane and hangars. Our sewer system upgrades, again, to service those hangars and power and communication. And as a recap, just a summary of those costs, again, UVU investing $800,000 into that immediate area, and the total for the access road and utilities is nearly $430,000. This slide is changed based on your recommendations in the works session, so, again, that $170,000 that's left over from lease of those three south side hangar pads would leave us with $170,000 that we'd be able to pay back to the general fund as part of this. The other, an additional $187,000 being transferred from the general fund into the airport CIP fund, and that's coming from higher than anticipated revenue of $187,000 by year-end, by budget year-end, and that's coming from those engineering inspection fees. And then, as we discussed earlier, $76,000, which covers the water system improvements, would come out of the Water Enterprise Fund. Are there any questions?
Brian, we talked about shifting $29,000 instead of using it from the Water Enterprise Fund, and I see you've added it to the engineering inspection fees, which earlier you projected having about $158,000. Should that 29 not be under general fund and just call it, you're taking $199,000 from the general fund, but repaying $170,000 back?
So, again, the previous slide was 158 as of April 1st. I think we feel fairly confident that those inspection fees by budget year-end will be more than enough to cover the $187,000. So, I guess it's a shell game at that point. It's all coming from general fund, but the repayment amount of the $170,000 remains the same.
Would you like Bryce to bring up the resolution, then? So we've shown here the changes on the resolution in red ink, just to show you how that reflects.
Are there any questions, any further questions by the council? We talked about this quite extensively in the work meeting today. I wondered if there are any further questions. Okay, this is another item that we will open for a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to comment to this item? Okay, see, no one coming forward. We will ask if there's, there is an implied motion on the table?
There is an implied motion on the table. You just asked for a vote on it.
Okay, and we don't have to approve this amended resolution, because it's not amended in this meeting, is that right?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
You did it earlier today, so I think you can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So, we have an implied motion on the table?
Just asking for any comment.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate that. Is there any comment on the implied motion? If not, then I will call for a vote. Those in favor? Thank you, and that passes unanimously. We'll move to item number eight, a resolution to amend Chapter 6 Southwest Area Neighborhoods of the General Plan. This will be presented by Brian Maxfield, one of our planning supervisors.
Thank you. This amendment's proposed by Mr. Matt Baker. It's to Policy Number 2 of the South East Area Guiding Principles, Policies, and Goals. Basically, the amendment now reads, "Maintain the residential R. General Plan designation with one-family residential development." The second sentence reads, "The aggregate gross density for any development or SDP should not exceed four units per acre, except as designated in item number 12." Item number 12 referred to a previous project that exceeded four units per acre on 820 North and Geneva Road, is a 19-unit townhome development. Mr. Baker's request is to eliminate that second sentence, which would remove the cap of four units per acre and allow higher density through the six neighborhoods affected by this. Basically, it's Fort Utah, Provo Bay, Sunset, Lakewood, Lakeview North, Lakeview South neighborhoods. In looking at this proposal, staff noted several things going on at this time. Principally, there's a Southwest Area Plan going on, which affects the four southern neighborhoods. That's a discussion item, which is part of that area, to look at more density clusters, which may change that in the future. However, it doesn't, the current neighborhood plan doesn't affect the two northern neighborhoods with the Lakeview neighborhoods. That neighborhood plan has not begun, and it could start somewhere in the near future. And we feel that that would probably be the better way to implement such a change. At the same time, we're going through a lot of utility issues, sewer issues through that area, and a lot of the sewer systems were set up based on that four-unit density. And so to change that could affect that, you know, new sewer lines and capacities and other things we're looking at at this time. So, we felt that even though there may be support with the idea of eliminating that cap and transitioning it to another, to a map or some other means, right now is not the time to make that change until we have that background for that. So, we had recommended against it, the Planning Commission recommended to you against the proposal. Again, emphasizing, not necessarily against the idea, but the timing is not proper. Any questions?
We will open it. Mr. Baker has the opportunity, is the one bringing us forward to speak. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Matt Baker. First of all, I do want to point out here on this, that the first sentence there is still maintained. It says, "One-family residential development." So as this has been discussed, and as the neighborhood chairs came in, everybody said, "Well, that's going to be, you know, open apartment complexes and multifamilies." I actually haven't suggested that. It still maintains in here this one-family residential, so we're still talking about single-family homes. It just allows for some other, some additional density. This is being proposed at this time, and I'm hearing now from the city that they're just saying that the timing isn't right for it. Obviously, there is a lot going on right now. It actually was staff at the city who suggested that I submit this right now, based on the idea that the plan is in process and is under review, and so this would be an important time to make that, to address those issues and make sure that this, you know, this question is addressed. After reviewing all the general plans for these areas, it would be a little late to come back the next month after that and said, "Oh, we'd like to adjust the general plan." So I think now is the appropriate time. They say they're still working on it. I don't know how long that is. Is that in the next couple of months, or is that five years? So there's a question there about how quickly that is going to happen. But additionally, this is obviously the general plan, which indicates direction. These neighborhoods in these areas still all have zoning, which still limits what can be done there. So obviously, the sky is always falling when the neighbors come, and, you know, that means there's going to be a big multifamily apartment complex in my backyard. Obviously, it doesn't mean that. There's still zoning in place that limits density. But as these areas are growing, which you guys are all aware they are, a lot has changed recently, corridor coming in, there's a lot more vacant land that needs to be addressed, how it's going to be used, and also, as I'm sure you guys are well aware, Provo doesn't have a lot of other areas to expand. That's the west neighborhoods out there is about really all the land that's left in Provo at this point. So I think density is one question that really needs to be addressed out there. So, it also indicates in here as designated in item 12. So kind of what's happened historically, unfortunately, is this piecemeal thing where we're approving, you know, this one can violate the general plan, but that one can't. Again, I don't think that's a proper, appropriate way of governing. I think there should be a rule and a plan that is the same for everyone. And so what I'm suggesting here is that they still remain one-family residential. I'm not asking for multifamily or anything else like that, but that we remove the cap in the general plan and let that be controlled going forward by zoning, which will already limit density in these different zones. So that's essentially my request at this time. I'm also hearing from them that one of the other issues that they brought up is sewer, and I'd actually went and talked with the sewer district as well. Capacity is a big question. What I've heard from the city in the previous meeting of the Planning Commission is that they wanted to address the sewer first and then come back and address this issue. To me, that seems really backwards. If you decide how much sewer you need based on the current density, and then you go and decide to address the density after you've addressed how much sewer capacity you need, would seem backwards, and hopefully you could agree with me, that seems a little backwards. I think, first of all, you'd want to decide how much density you're going to have in an area, and then from there, you'd want to decide how much sewer capacity you probably need to create. Obviously, the sewer capacity is under review, and they're looking at upgrading it. To wait till after you upgrade the sewer to decide that you want to increase the density would really be backwards. When I talked to the sewer district, they indicated this would be a good time to bring this question forward as well. So, that is essentially what I want to bring forward. Obviously, with the recommendation here from staff and the Planning Commission of denial, I would request that if your recommendation is to deny it at this time, alternatively to denying it or in lieu of, I would request that you continue it for a time, so that this question's still salient and still brought up, and can still be addressed with these plan amendments, and motivates them to happen sometime sooner, rather than on the five-year plan or something, so that I still have a say or a voice in this, and that this issue can be readdressed. They're saying it's a timing issue right now. If you're leaning towards denying at this point due to timing, I request that you continue it so that we can address the timing issue and come back here with this request whenever they've had the time that they need to review it. So, that's my request. Any questions?
Thank you, Matt. Okay, we will open this now, open for public comment. Oh, neighborhood chairs, are there any neighborhood chairs? Thank you. Beth.
Beth Alaga, Lakeview North Neighborhood Chair, Southwest Area Representative. There are several things that Mr. Baker presented that I'd like to address. One of them is, we are actually looking at densities in this area right now in the master plan. We are not afraid of density, but we would like to inappropriate areas. I believe the four units per acre allows us to play with those densities in a way to get all of the goals that we want out in that area. So as we look at the west side development policies that were adopted last year of agricultural preservation, of looking at all of these different aspects in the neighborhood, the four units per acre allows us to designate certain areas that are more appropriate for densities, while preserving those areas that are really appropriate for agriculture groups, like the floodplain zone. So keeping this designation in the general plan helps actually us look at a master plan better. I know the Southwest Area Plan is not for the Lakeview North and Lakeview South neighborhoods at this time, but the comment has been made, when that master plan is in place, many of those policies will be looked at in the Lakeview North and Lakeview South and be applied to those neighborhoods also. He says that zoning is a way that we keep densities down, but as we all know, zoning can change and does change frequently. We have zoning violations all the time, which come not as, trying to put this nicely, not as meanly, but just it kind of happens sometimes, the way things come together. So I don't trust zoning as much as I would a designation in the general plan. Sorry, I'm trying to think of the other things. Oh, yes, and the other thing he said was that this has already been violated multiple times in developments on the west side. And I agree with that. We have a lot of townhome complexes that go over the four units per acre. So this designation, to me, is, I think it needs to be refined in the fact is, are we looking at four units per acre per development, per neighborhood, or the overall area? And as we're working on the master plan, we're actually addressing that concern also. We're looking at it as the overall area of where the density is appropriate to go, what transit routes there are, what amenities are out there, and where the densities are appropriate. And with this limitation on that, it allows, like I said, it allows us to gain the perspective of the whole area and the, sorry, my brain is not working tonight, I apologize, against the policies put into place throughout the entire area. We do have a limitation to the sewer. I don't see that being lifted as, listening to discussions anytime in the future. And so this, talking to developers, as they come to me, I've had, over the last month, six developers call me. We have a neighborhood meeting tomorrow night, we're talking to three developers in my neighborhood, and telling them about the sewer issues, about the limitation on development. They step back and they go, "Oh, well, maybe I need to think about this differently, building in this area, and what is it the residents want, what is it the city wants?" And so getting that limitation actually gets developers to think about the area differently, and not, "How much can we stick in for as much profit as I can get?" I think I went through all the points in my head. If you have any questions for me, please ask. Nope, thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Brian Taylor, Sunset Neighborhood Chair, came tonight to, I've been asked by my neighbors to come here and speak out as strongly as possible against this higher density or changing any density on the west side as possible. Those that live in my neighborhood are asking that with a plan that was set aside for four units per acre, it's not something that just magically popped out of the air. Many of the people wish to have a, more of an urban rather than the rural, heavy rural areas. However, we do know that there's a desperate need for what is being deemed as affordable housing, or smaller units, or higher density. And if we can find a balance between those developments and those people who are looking to offset the amount of density that would garner the need for this lower-income housing with more open space or more land set aside for agricultural preservation, we would desperately look at those plans and look for a balance. But I'm asking that the city council be consistent with this particular plan and vote against this amendment to change the requirement of four units per acre, any modification to the plan, as long as, if it's done on this one, that all other developers that come forward and ask for higher density without a substantial equivalence as to why they're doing it, or substantial reasoning behind it, we really need to work with the neighbors. And as it stands with my neighbors in the Sunset area, we're truly looking for a better balance of the affordable housing and the need for that affordable housing and the four units per acre. And if we can continue to offset that with other creative, thinking outside-of-the-box type of developers, we would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Becky Bogdan, Lakewood Neighborhood Chair. I'm not going to waste your time and tell you anything more than what's been said, but Lakewood does also request that you vote this down, and that this can be waited until the master plan is done, and the sewer, what's going to be done with the sewer, where is it going to be, is there going to be a 36-inch parallel line that's going to go out, or just the timing of this is not appropriate? Or just the timing of this is not appropriate? Thank you.
I have a question for the neighborhood chairs. Has any of you had a neighborhood meeting? So as you speak to this, have there been neighborhood meetings that have been held on this particular item?
This was presented at the area meeting last month. The neighborhood was very much against it and very up in arms about it. We had it presented the same night that Robert Vernon came out and talked about affordable housing and what that means in our area and what that could mean in our area.
Thank you. That's what I knew.
And when you say area meeting, we're talking Sunset and Lakeview were there.
Yeah, the area meeting was for all six of the neighborhoods. We had about, what, 50 to 60 in attendance? About 50 to 60 in attendance and all of them, there wasn't a single positive comment, so.
At the end, we had 100?
Okay. Any other questions?
I appreciate the neighborhood meeting and that's what I was interested in. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
You guys, I'm a developer. You guys have had plenty of developments before you, so I don't ever expect that you can have, if you have 100 neighbors, show up 100 of them, we'll say, I don't want any more development in my backyard, go somewhere else. So I'm sure that's nothing new to you, but I would like to talk about the characterization. There was a meeting, but I don't know how she is characterizing it. There wasn't a yays or a nays or a vote taken. So her characterization of everybody being against it was just her personal opinion. Like I said, there was no vote taken, no yays or nays, anything else. So I just wanted to clarify that, that that's a personal opinion, not a statistical or a vote taken or anything else to that effect.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're good there. So I think now what we'll do, we'll take this and open this up to public comment. Anyone interested in discussing this from the public? Please come forward.
I'm Kathy Minmarsh and I'm from the Provo North Park area. And I'm against having high-density housing because there's a lot of crime that starts with high-density housing and you have. And so if you're going to only put four, I mean, if you're putting four units, how many people can be in those four units? I mean, is it a, I've cleaned houses where, I used to clean houses for a company that we'd do new houses before people moved in. And there would be four apartments on one unit. And they're so close. The next unit has four apartments, the next unit has four apartments. And as far as I'm concerned, you are just cramming people in to these little apartments. And I don't, you know, I think that having high-density housing instead of having some agriculture and some bigger yards where people can play, you know, and parks, you're asking for trouble because it starts to become a crime area. And when you get a lot of people crammed in together in small areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see anyone else from the public to come forward. And we'll bring this back for council discussion. Mr. Harding.
I agree that the question and the discussion around density needs to be a part of the discussion for sewer capacity and for the master plan. I have full confidence that this topic is part of the holistic review that we've been, the process that we've been in for some time. I know it's continuing on, so I feel comfortable that it is on the radar and that I'm looking forward to the recommendations that will be coming out of this process. And so I will not be supporting this resolution.
I also agree that this, I don't think this is a five-year project. I think it's something that we're determining fairly quickly, in short order. I know that we'll be making decisions on sewer treatment plants within months here. It's not, this is not a long-range picture that we're dealing with in my mind. And so I think we just need to give this a little bit more time to deal with and we can bring this back, we can have this be applied for another time. Mr. Sewell.
I'm confident also in the current process and the desires of the neighborhood and am supportive of the recommendation of staff and the planning commission. I did want to make one observation though, that this actually reads a little differently than I thought it did. Or I'm not sure this actually expresses the intent that I thought we had for the west side, which was that the aggregate of density for the whole area would be limited to four units per acre. But this makes it sound like we don't want any development, no matter how small, to exceed four per acre. And I don't think that's the intent. So I do see that as a problem, but I think it can be worked out using the current process.
Just a quick response to that. So this is the policy that's currently in place. And so I don't think anyone, I don't know what the proposal will be coming forward, but I don't think it's going to be to maintain this. There will be a new proposal coming forward, but the current proposal before us is just to strike those two sentences.
Right, and I understand the problem with that, yeah, for sure.
Mr. Connect.
A question for Brian. So the current language says that the gross density for any development or specific development plan, SDP, should not exceed four units per acre. It seemed like when we were talking earlier today that there was talk that a specific development plan could exceed four, or is that what we're thinking of doing?
There's a conflicting statement in one of the neighborhood plans that says it can exceed four units per acre through an SDP zone. So it's really a conflict between two, the overall goals and policies for the southwest area versus particular neighborhood plans. They're worded a little bit differently.
Okay, so as we go forward with the west side planning process, are they going to address that conflict and come out with a statement that makes it clear what role a specific development plan would play?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Henley.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that something that Brian Taylor said struck me as important that, and I think Becky and Beth and Brian have all shown to me to be very thoughtful about how they, what they want in their neighborhoods and are not simply knee-jerk reactions to things. And so I think the request for a very careful, deliberate visionary understanding of where we go from here as the west opens up to more development is really crucial so that we do preserve agriculture and we do have some higher-density housing where we think we can put it and where it's needed and that we also preserve the neighborhood community. And to Mr. Baker, I would just simply suggest that you try to make them your allies rather than be as dismissive as it sounded like you were tonight of the community feelings. I think it's very important. I think reconciliation is possible because I don't think these, the proposal of higher-density housing in the west is something that is irreconcilable with the feelings that have been expressed. I think more work needs to be done.
Okay, any other discussion at this point? Okay, this item meets the following qualifications on the report of action from the planning commission and also as far as noticing also. Welcome, Brian. Thank you.
Thank you, I apologize. It took me so long to get here.
So that does meet the requirements that are necessary to take action tonight. With that being said, we do have an implied motion on the table and any council member can request that we postpone this to, for another meeting, should they desire to. Look to see if that's, it would be the wish of any council member at this time. Okay, seeing no response there, I will then ask for a vote on the implied motion. Those in favor of the implied motion, which would be, we better qualify that, that it would be that we would be striking the wording from this ordinance. So that is the implied motion. Those in favors of that, please indicate. Those that are opposed, please indicate. Okay, that is denied unanimously. Okay, thank you very much. We will then move on to item number nine, an ordinance amending Provo City Code regarding allowing motorcycle parking to count towards vehicle parking requirements in the arbors on the Avenue Pro Zone, River Bottoms neighborhood. Mr. Maxfield will.
Thank you. Mr. Brady DuCher is proposing amendment which would allow at least a limited number of required parking spaces. Normally, those would be eight and a half by 18-foot-deep spaces, but that a limited number of those could, I'm wording that backwards, I apologize, that if you had two motorcycle spaces, that could be considered as meeting that requirement for one of those parking spaces. The staff reviewed that. We looked specifically at areas of the city. Although there is definitely support for looking at parking alternatives and ways we can make parking more amenable to the neighborhoods as well as, you know, higher development areas in the city, we felt that it was premature to open that up to the full parking ordinance at this time. Since Mr. DuCher's request actually pertains to the arbors on the avenue development on University Avenue across from River Woods, we felt, and it has its own zone, a pro zone on the site, we felt to be appropriate instead to just apply it to that zone. And in doing so, we feel that it would kind of meet his objective, which really is to gain one more parking space, which would allow him the maximum development on the property of 68 units. But at the same time, it doesn't necessarily eliminate units, parking spaces, because those motorcycle spots could be in other locations, which wouldn't be big enough for a standard car. And because of that, we felt this would be a good area to implement that, observe it, and see if there are any issues with that. Along with our work meeting earlier today, I did pass out an email back and forth from the neighborhood, from the homeowners association president, Chris Carr, that stated objections to the change. And I think some of you have also seen some emails from some of the neighborhood people that talked about other situations in the area possibly looking at alternative parking or alternative access drives and things, which would improve traffic flow through that area. Are there any questions? I guess I apologize for that. I should state that we, the staff and the planning commission, did recommend changing the number of every 50 spaces rather than every 25. And so that is the difference in your amendment. Thank you.
That's what we're wondering about. If we, one of them here that we have on the screen right now, it says 25. And we have two of these, two of these proposals. Or should we just change this one to 2?
Yeah, that's.
It says 25 right there, should that be 50?
Our recommendation was for 50, and the one that was in the planning commission packet had the 50. But this is the original proposal is presented to staff, was the 25.
Mr. Chair, would it be appropriate for, well, I don't even, to make a substitute motion and change that to 50, Brian? Or should we have the discussion on this first, or do we just vote this down and have another?
Well, no, you can certainly change this. What you, the procedure for changing, and this is just what was, I think, delivered to council staff and so we sent it on. But the process for doing that would be to make a motion to change the draft to, from 25 to 50 and just vote on that change. If that motion is approved, then the implied motion applies to the amended draft.
Okay. Thank you.
With that being said, then I'll ask council if they would like to do that at this time or if they would like to have the discussion before this motion.
So moved.
Thank you, George. Is there a second? Now, this is to amend the document that we received.
Can I just ask a question, or we would still discuss?
And we will still discuss the issue. This is just to amend the document and then we'll have the discussion on the document.
I'm just wondering if we should hear from the applicant first in case there's some comment they have on that or?
The understanding we had was that we were going to get it with 50 tonight. I'm surprised we see 25 there. I thought we moved forward one with 50 today.
I agree with George. I think that would be appropriate to hear from the applicant if they would like to hear why they presented 25. I don't see anyone here from, I don't see Mr. Horn here or anyone else for that discussion. Seeing no one here, then we won't call for that at this point. We will, we do have a motion on the table to amend our document to 50. Is there?
Is there a second?
Is there a second? I didn't know what that meant, but I got you. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Connect. We have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Could I comment on that first?
Oh, please. Sorry.
I think it did go to our sire document packet with the 25, I believe. I support the 50. I do think it would be better to have the public comment and the neighborhood chair, if he's here. But anyway, so just, that's my thoughts on the motion.
Thank you.
I'd just throw out that nothing you're doing at this particular moment is all that binding. If you want to change it back to 25 after the discussion, you can easily do that.
Thank you. That being said, we do have the motion and the second. Those in favor, please indicate. Okay, that passes unanimously. We will then open the item up to neighborhood chairs. And Mr. Rosen's here. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, I'm Dave Rosen. I'm the River Bottoms Neighborhood Chair. And we appreciate it as neighbors to be able to express opinions and thoughts on this action. I believe you have received Chris Carr's information from the HOA in your packet. If you have, I won't spend a lot of time reviewing that. They have some opinions that the granting of these additional parking spaces will put undue pressure on their HOA in Phase 1 of the arbors, and they're against that. We did not hold a neighborhood meeting on this, but we did poll the neighbors and gave them an opportunity to respond to me, of which about 2% responded. So we don't have a great response. But those that did respond were very much in favor of allowing this action to proceed. Now, along with that, those neighbors also responded about the safety issues about this development of the arbors. And let me qualify that these comments came in before the accident on 3700 North and the death of the small child. That accentuates some of their concerns. The concerns of the neighbors are for the safety of the residents of Arbors 2, for Canyon Brook, and for those that are pulling in and out of the River Woods shopping mall. The speeds along this area are approximately 45 to 50 miles an hour. And right now, in a 100 to 200-foot spot, you have Canyon Brook coming out onto University Avenue in a free-flowing right and left turn. You will now have Arbors 2 flowing on to the same spot, a few feet down the road. You will now have arbors two flowing on to the same spot, a few feet down the road, and you have the Riverwoods Mall flowing both right and left across all those lanes of traffic. The safety issues there are immense, that we're going to have serious accidents as we now join all three of these groups together in a very, very short area. There's some confusion. Uh, we understand that, and we know that this is a state road, and the state has precedent over whether they're going to put a light on that area or not. Uh, I've heard it both ways. I've heard it from the developers that the state has been adamant that they are not discussing a light at all, and I've heard it otherwise, that the state is anticipating and putting a light there. The reason that we bring up these issues is because it will impact what the decision that you make, and it will impact the decision that you just made of moving it to fifty spots. Uh, the citizens would prefer that a light be placed there, that the traffic be slowed down, but in order to do that, the arbors Phase Two will have to give up two parking spots, and the Canyon Brook will have to then come together and give up some space. And so we may need to modify it again, but you as a council will have some decisions. Uh, we as a neighborhood can't force the the developers into looking seriously at this. I talked to the developer following the planning commission, and basically their understanding is the state's not interested, and they're not even going to move ahead on that kind of proposal. Uh, we as neighbors feel very, very concerned about that, that we have an opportunity at this point, as we grant development of this area, to look at putting a light there and to, in turn, we as neighbors would be willing to grant additional motorcycle parking spaces in the arbors two to allow them to reach their maximum parking that they need to fill their units. Again, the uh, the HOAs against that, they feel like they should cut down on a number of units to meet the parking spaces. Uh, another comment came from Mike Roan, and I'm not sure if you've received that in your packet. If you haven't, he's in a.
That'll be read in.
Okay, that is going to be read in. If if it was not, then I would take the time to read that. He is not here. We're having a northeast neighborhood meeting tonight, and he is conducting that one, so he's not there. But again, he expresses some of those concerns from a northeast area about the safety issues, and those come in light of a recent accident, thirty-seven hundred north. Um, those are our feelings. We're grateful for you for listening to them. Any any questions for us as neighbors?
I I appreciate you talking with the neighbor. Is there any way, how do we, Brian, this is something that you can do. We, I feel we've kind of, we are at it with two separate developments. What, I don't know where the city's responsibility is to get in and try to um negotiate something. I don't think that this is necessarily our, we can request. What what's the process through this?
Uh, I think the developer, if he knew he could get qualifying spaces, you know, he wouldn't be harmed in that manner. I don't know that totally that he'd be opposed to it. The, I think the biggest issue is getting the HOA uh to agree. You know, the HOAs actually uh has a lot of owners. You know, you got fifty units, and I'm not sure out of the fifty units on the north portion, how many of those are owned by the same person, or if they're individual ownerships, but you've got a number of of people who would have to uh, I guess, some means vote in favor of granting an easement through uh their development to an outside area. It's different granting it within the development. This is actually granting it to an outside development, so uh, I don't, maybe Brian Jones, if that's okay, pass that off to him. I I know Brian, you know, remembers back, I'm sure, to when we originally looked at the development agreement and other things, and whether or not that's possible or not, I don't know.
I don't think I followed you, so I'm not sure. Tell me again what you're proposing.
Well, they're looking at the development on on the south, and I apologize, I can't think of the name of it.
Canyon Brook?
Uh, having an access on the south side of arbors that would go through arbors and then back out to the light uh on the north side.
When you say they, who do you mean?
Uh, the the condominium to the south.
And that's, you say to the light, but that light, I hear a question about whether that light's even going to exist.
There's one on the north now. It's it's opposite the entrance into uh Riverwoods, the office park. If you got the north entrance.
Okay, okay, I know where that light is. I thought they were talking about a light at the north end of the Riverwoods project, that is that?
That would be the trade-off. You know, if you couldn't have this access, could you get a light down on the other side? So that's.
And I've heard, I I heard like Mr. Rosen that yes and no. I I mean, this is the first time I've heard no.
Right now, you have Canyon Brook coming out. You will have the arbors Phase Two coming out, which is straight across from the exit of the Riverwoods Mall, from the mall area. And then the light is further down at the business park, and then the light on forty-eight hundred. So this is in the middle, and the idea is is that Canyon Brook come and join with the arbors, and a light go in there such that the traffic coming out of the mall and the traffic coming out of these two projects funnel through a light situation rather than all three of them in a free-flow right and left situation.
And has UDOT weighed in on that? That's, I've heard yes, that they were going to do that, but now I've hear no.
Gary?
George?
My question is um to Mr. Rosen, if you think there's um anything, I mean, we were sort of trying to do some of the calculations earlier today, if it were uh one out of every fifty required vehicle spaces versus one out of twenty-five. I mean, we, I don't want to pass anything that locks out the possibility of of an egress that's needed. And so I wonder if you have an opinion about whether or not, since since we're not voting on the light, which sounds like a very important thing, but if we're voting on these spaces, I don't want to pass something that prevents or makes it more difficult for an egress to be um given later.
If it's limited to fifty, that will grant them about three uh motorcycle areas. It'll grant them an extra parking space and a half, which will just meet the minimum requirement by the city. If you leave it at twenty-five, that gives them, and I haven't done the total math, but it allows them to use additional mark motorcycle spaces to make up the difference, still meet the city limit, but they will be giving up two full parking spots to allow this light to go in, to allow the traffic flow and.
So the one out of twenty-five is a better ratio, gives you more flexibility.
One out of twenty-five leaves a lot more flexibility, that the city can still hold to its uh minimum parking spaces. Uh, if you limit it to fifty, um, it still may be doable, but we may have to grant them a uh a leeway of not meeting that full parking spaces in order for them to give up some for the roads and the light to go in.
Mr. Stewart?
We're setting a precedent here of what we would be willing to trade parking spaces for motorcycle spaces, and I I worry one in twenty-five, other people trying to take advantage of that, using motorcycle spaces that aren't ever going to be used for motorcycles just to reduce their necessary parking, because they could find motorcycle spaces quite a few different places, and then reduce their parking below what we feel is really, what we really want. So I think, I think to take this and tie it to that is helpful to you in this particular situation, but not might not be good citywide, because once you set a precedent for trading two motorcycle places for a parking space, then other people are going to request that same thing.
Mr. Harding?
So um, you know, this this is eligible for just a single council member to to um ask for it to be postponed. Um, I actually do think that there may be some wisdom in postponing. We're we're meeting again in one week, so that would that would give us, that would that would give seven more days. Um, we could indicate and maybe request of of community development and and the neighborhood chairs, you know, to use that week to see if there is a viable agreement that that we can move forward with with um with this easement idea. Um, I think earlier we did back-of-the-envelope calculations and thought that though one in, yeah, one in fifty was sufficient, now it sounds like maybe the one in twenty-five would be necessary, but rather than doing it on the fly here, you know, what if we postpone it for seven days? Let this, let let's see what they can work out if if, and if if people are saying, no, I'm not willing to cooperate, well, that's kind of the end of that discussion. So rather than work out all of these details, let's let's see what they can come back with.
Mr. Maxfield?
If I could just clarify one thing, so we all work off the same page. Uh, arbors two needs about a hundred and fifty or so spaces for, that they're required to have for their development. The overall arbors project is about two sixty-six, and so you would have to get the whole arbors project to agree to the parking access anyway, so that's why we're going by the two sixty-six. And if you divide that by fifty, it gives you more than obviously the other. But just so you you know where those numbers, why they're two different numbers, where they come from.
Question connect.
Brian? So I do want to hear in the in the next week if everyone can get together, but everyone, to me, includes UDOT. Love to hear what they consider or think about this situation, because it is setting up to be a dangerous situation, and I would like to think that they would be concerned about that.
Yeah, that certainly some way to provide more information on that would be helpful, I'm sure.
Mr. Sewell?
I I too would like to postpone, and my preference would be um if we can somehow get an answer as to whether the the two private entities are are willing to work out an access and try to somehow get an answer from UDOT, whether that's even feasible. I would, I I share Mr. Hanley's concern. I would hate to, I just want to make sure that we're not approving something that would um inhibit that that development.
Well, look, so I think it's important that we try to get an access, even if UDOT doesn't want to uh commit anything, or even at this point if they say no, but if we get the access and we do what we think is appropriate, then over time, maybe they'll come around. But nonetheless, I think it's proper to ask them now where they are.
And this is something we can ask, but we can't do it, because I mean, we we're not allowed as a city to access that road without their permission. And so personally, I think I'm ready to hold to the fifty, and but I would be more than happy to drop to twenty-five if we could somehow work out that access, because to me, those extra parking stalls would be well worth the safety that would be available for a light. But we've had a lot of discussion here, and we do, we, we're going to go neighborhood chairs. We haven't, maybe we need to bring this back to council if it's okay in a minute. Let's see if that's.
Just one clarification on what Brian just said. He said fifty would work still.
Yes.
That's based on, I'll give you another basis for that. Uh, what we feel is there are three parking spaces that need be taken out, because they're eight and a half feet wide, so you need twenty-four feet, basically, to to have that aisle. So you'd have to make up, that'd be six plus the other unit, you'd have to make up, you'd have to have eight. So if you uh, help me out. So if you did eight, then you may need.
Need four hundred, so so you're, so that's not correct.
That's, I know, if we think about it, it's fairly easy, but.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen, for being here tonight. Um, we will open this up to anyone else for public comment. Cliff?
Did you want to have the neighborhood, the area reps' letter read into the record?
Oh, please, yes, that's a good part of, yeah, let's do that. As a neighborhood area rep.
This is from Mike Roan, Northeast Area Representative and Riverside Neighborhood Chair. He says, city council members, as you consider the request by the developers of the arbors to satisfy the parking requirement by converting a couple parking stalls from automobiles to motorcycle stalls, I urge you to grant their request. Additionally, I urge you in the strongest possible language to grant arbors an additional waiver, exception, variance, um, to eliminate two additional parking stalls along their southern property line, which would connect the street transacting Canyon Brook condos north to south in the middle of that development. This variance would then allow the vehicular traffic from Canyon Brook and arbors to both exit at five thousand north, where UDOT has committed to install a traffic light. If traffic, if additional parking is absolutely necessary for arbors, please now another automobile stall to be converted, the two motorcycle stalls to compensate for this loss of parking. This variance is a critical safety issue. Without it, both north and southbound traffic trying to make left-hand turns to either enter the Riverwood Shopping Center, northbound at five thousand, or south uh, or southbound to enter Canyon Brook are forced to queue in the exact same hundred feet of the center turn suicide lane on University Avenue. Granting this variance accommodation waiver will help eliminate many future deaths and injuries like the one week ago when three-year-old Chelsea Parkinson was killed and her mother and baby sister severely injured. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we will open it to the general public for any comments. Okay, seeing none, we will bring it back to the council, and my opinion is, after the discussion, that this will be continued at least one week. Is there any other discussion on this item? My question is, how, who's going to coordinate this? How do we, how do we coordinate a meeting, Brian? Can you help us with that? Is this something, we we want answers from UDOT? We would like, I'd love to see um Canyon Brook and the arbors getting together and discussing whether that's a pot, first, I guess the question is UDOT. That's the number one question, and then after that, um, getting with Canyon Brook and the arbors to see how we can make this work at a light if possible.
And and if it's okay, I could coordinate with Mr. Rosen and and try and see what we can work out that way.
Are you able to do that, Dave, with the time? I I don't want to take, I appreciate that and the efforts, and the effort that goes into this, but if you would do that with Mr. Rosen, that would be very helpful.
And just to follow-up comment to what Mr. Connect said, the the wheels of UDOT may turn slowly, so there's, you know, the, if we can at least get the access, we may get the light eventually, even if not right away.
And and that's the confusing thing to me, is I hear Mr. Roan's letter that UDOT has already agreed to that, and that kind of surprises me, but I, so I would be interested in getting that clarification.
And I think the key point is that at least we left the opportunity there. If we make the change so that those three spaces could eventually be moved or changed, then that would allow, you know, discussions to continue. They wouldn't have to be concluded by next week.
But my only challenge with that is who will then pay for those improvements in it? Who's going to pay for them, I guess, now? That's another question, and who would be paying for those improvements going on to the University Avenue?
I move to uh continue this item to the May first council meeting.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Dave and Brian, for, see, see what you can help us out with. We appreciate your efforts on this one. We'll now move to item number ten, a resolution authorizing the mayor of Provo City to negotiate and execute a post-performance sales tax increment reimbursement agreement between Provo City Corporation and Day's Market Grocery Store. This will be presented by Dixon Holmes.
Before I start, do any of the council members have any questions on this? This was her in a work session two weeks ago. Uh, Mr. Day with Day's Market is here. Uh, he did not speak last time, but he he's here and might be good to hear from him. But for the benefit of the public, um, uh, the mayor's office of economic development routinely meets with a variety of businesses around the community and is actively engaged in trying to enhance the offerings in our community and increase our sales tax base. Uh, one, as a little background, one of the challenges that Provo City does have is um, and even more accent, uh, accentuated lately, uh, is the lack of grocery stores. Um, as many of you are aware, the west side would dearly love to have a grocery store or even a market. Um, and with Allen's Market closing on Third South and and Seventh East, uh, it was only recently that we did get a contact information for Allen's Market. I don't know if they'll respond. They they tended to be pretty reclusive at this point, and hope that they may respond, that we might be able to remarket the property. Uh, but anyway, grocery stores. But anyway, grocery stores are, are something very desirable in our community so people can buy their, their groceries locally without crossing city lines. Also, part of the backdrop here is that the city, on a study that was done probably three or four years ago now, has quite a bit of leakage in our community, meaning that people shop outside of our community to buy their goods and services. And to the tune of about two hundred million dollars annually. And twenty-five percent of that are fifty million dollars. It's not all grocery, but grocery is a major component of that, along with some other soft goods. So that's kind of the context of which part of the setting is. And again, Day's Market did approach our office and indicated that they were desirous of making a, a significant remodel to, to the store where they're currently located now on Canyon Road. And because of its location in the, in the northeast port, part of our community, which faces some pretty steep competition from across the border at Harman's, at Smith's, and at the Costco in Orem, it's pretty easy just to slip across the border, go buy what you need and come back. And it's not, when I say a border, that's, you know, between Provo and Orem. It's, I know that sounds bad or other connotations, but, but the point is that people do leave our community to go shopping. And by strengthening the offering at Day's, certainly we're not going to stem that tide completely. But if we could help reduce that a little bit and to continue to help our local grocers stay strong, would be a benefit to our community. So the request that Day's is making is that they do want to make and are seeking some funding. And I'll let Mr. Day explain that if, if you'll give him the opportunity to, to make an investment into the store to remodel it, upgrade it, refresh it, if you will, to the inside. The, the shopping center owner will be doing a remodel to the outside of the store. But the Day's believe that by making the interior remodel or refreshing, that they can continue to stay relevant, that they can have additional offerings for their customers and clients. And they have requested that the city participate in a post-performance sales tax, tax increment incentive. The city's history in providing these types of incentives is rather limited. And we've had this conversation in, in public and with the council in a variety of settings. The city in the last eighteen months has approved two previous such requests. One on the Parkway, University Parkway at Parkway Village and then down in East Bay. The first one at Parkway Village, the owners there were taking out a building to accommodate for a four-way intersection on the Parkway in conjunction with UDOT and the UTA doing the front runner, not front, the, the UVX, the Bus Rapid Transit. You all know what it is. It's had numerous names. I'm sorry, I have a little brain cramp there. Anyway, so to accommodate that, it was going to be about a million and a half dollars in, in costs or lost revenue and, and came up with a very similar structure, using a framework for them to recoup some of that cost. And then more recently, down in East Bay, to backfill some of the space there of a, about a half vacant shopping center to backfill with a, with a Ross. So anyway, using the similar type of a framework, the, the Day's Market would invest over a million dollars into the, into the property. And then over a ten-year time period, have the ability to earn back through sales tax incentives over the baseline. So again, what, what the city is currently receiving in sales tax would not be, would not be given back. They'd have to perform above that baseline. So it's post-performance. If they don't, they don't perform or if they're not able to reach some of their sales goals, and then they would receive nothing in return if they just were to keep at, at the current level they're doing now. Different than the other two deals in that, again, trying to backfill some vacant space, trying to accommodate some additional expenses. And with the potential of maybe doubling or tripling their sales, if, if the Day's were to be so successful, their Day's Market, that would be awesome. But, but more than likely, they're more like a fifteen to maybe twenty-five percent increase. We'd like to use a similar structure so that if they are wildly successful, they might be able to earn more back. Probably more realistically is over a, a ten-year period of time, they, they may get up to maybe a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars back over their, their million-plus-dollar investment. And that's, again, we're asking that the council would authorize the mayor to use a similar formula or an agreement with Day's Market as we have in the past two agreements to allow for them to earn back or recoup some of their expense that then to roll back into the market to do some additional things that were above and beyond the loan that they'll be receiving to, to make the enhancements inside the store. So that's an overview of what the request is. Again, similar to the other two requests, these are groups that are willing to invest in their own property or into property to which they're currently located and then to, to receive back an incentive to help offset some additional expenses. If you have any questions for me, that would be my presentation. And, and again, I would encourage or, or invite the council to then invite Mr. Day forward to maybe answer any questions you may have of him.
Any questions for Mr. Holmes?
Dixon, can you just help me understand the numbers a little bit better?
Yeah.
If, if sales can be boosted by fifteen to twenty percent and we're generating now forty thousand dollars annually in tax revenue, let's do it easy and say twenty percent. So that means eight thousand dollars a year would be the increase in tax revenue potentially.
Above the baseline, correct?
Above the baseline.
Correct.
And to recoup half of their investment, which would be five hundred thousand dollars, and this agreement's for ten years, that means maximum is eighty thousand, not maximum, but realistic maximum is eighty thousand dollars.
They could potentially recoup if, if it were to do a twenty percent increase and stay steady, not year over year, but just steady, yes.
Okay, so, so that deal point of owners to recoup half the out-of-pocket expenses and then share the additional with the city, that's really, really-
That's correct. But, but the framework is there. So if they were successful, that they would be able to potentially recoup that additional revenue coming to them. But more than likely, as, as they have been realistic in their projections on what they're trying to accomplish, it could be anywhere from that eighty to maybe a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand. So they may not, never approach the halfway point, but the framework is there that if they were so successful, that they could. That's correct.
Okay, any other questions? If not, then we will hear from the applicant at this time. Mr. Day, good to have you here.
It's like to thank the economic development team and you council members for the opportunity to come before you and Mayor, you two. So our, our point was, we've been operating in business in Provo since nineteen eighty-one. I don't want to drag this out. But I've been, my wife and I have lived in the community since eighty-six. And it's been thirty years now, thirty-one this fall. And we're looking at, I just bought the family business from my brothers. We sold our store in Heber City and my three brothers retired. And I'm not ready to do that yet. And my son has been waiting for the day that we separated from my brothers to come to work for us. And, and his goal is to take over this store. And we've worked with a brand-new landlord who's Provo-based. I think that the difference between us and the previous two projects is we're Provo-based. My son just moved from Orem back to Provo and bought a home where he plans on staying. I don't know necessarily in that exact home. I kind of think so, but anyway, I think that that's something to recognize. Our last remodel was in two thousand and one. We were complete that year and, and had a celebration with the Olympics. And our facility is old and tired. And our inside store is old and tired. And, and we're looking to refresh and rejuvenate and to focus even more on fresh, which is according to what happens with our peers, strength that we have and to make sure that we can continue that as the markets change and opportunities come about.
Mr. Stewart?
Would you like to introduce the people that are with you?
You bet. Should I have them come up or just? My wife Paula and my son Brock. Brock grew up here and, and moved to Orem a little bit after he got married. He went to school at Arizona State University and he graduated from UVU in accounting.
Any questions for Mr. Day at this time?
Let me just thank you and your family for operating that market. It's, it's in a different area of the city than, than I live and only have been up there a couple of times. But from everyone that I hear that's in the neighborhood, they, they really appreciate having the market. And as Mr. Holmes said earlier, there's a couple of places in, in, in Provo that, that would love to have your market or market like it there. So thank you for, for what you do for the community.
Thank you very much.
One more question, Gary. Did you say ASU?
Arizona State University, yes.
Sun Devil or Cougar?
So they're Sun Devils.
So am I.
Mr. Connect?
So when I first moved to Provo in nineteen seventy-one, our house, which is still there, I believe, was, was on thirty-one forty North, right behind where your store is now. And eventually they closed off the road and put in the store. But yeah, we're really excited and, and pleased with what you do for the community.
This is an exciting thing for me as a member of the council. And I think it gives us as a council to have a, an important discussion with Mr. Holmes with regard to the future of our tax increment programs. And we look forward to that discussion very shortly. And just for the council members, we've talked with Dixon about this and we will be having a discussion to help us formulate some policy around some of these things and get a, a little better understanding of where we're going with this and why we do what we do. So, Mr. Stewart?
Don't mean to be lighthearted, but we're still going to continue with three donuts for a dollar after seven.
We're, so our, our goal, Mr. Stewart, is to never sell a day-old donut. So we're going to be three for a dollar so that we can get rid of them and start with a fresh batch in the morning. Thank you.
The donut man. There you go.
A lot of stores box them up and sell them the next day. It's not part of our plan.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Steve. We will now open this up. I don't think it's a neighborhood issue at this point with zoning, so we will open it up for a public comment. If there's any one here to comment to this item. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll bring it back to the council. And any further discussion on this item? Mr. Harding?
Say my piece quickly and then I'll, I'll try to be quiet the rest of the item. So, love the company, love what they do. But from a policy perspective, I think it's bad policy to use public taxes as incentives to what I think should be fairly routine business practice. In two thousand and one, there was a remodel that was completed. My guess, just knowing some of the history of tax fin, increment financing, I don't believe that two thousand and one remodel was, was supported by, by public tax money. You know, I don't, I don't fault them for coming forward to ask as we have been giving tax money to, to other groups. But I just, I, I think it is important for us to have this policy discussion and, and until we have that, I, I do not feel comfortable putting, putting public money into private business investment. It's not that they're not valued. It's not that we're against businesses. But I believe tax increment incentives should be very strategically applied, very surgically applied. And, and my feeling is this, this is a fairly routine period in this business cycle. And it's something that should be done, hopefully will be done with or without the tax increment money. And so I, unless one of you change my mind drastically in the next couple of minutes, I'll be voting against it.
So I, I agree, we do need to have a discussion about the parameters and kind of when it's appropriate to use tax increment financing. I feel good about it and am supportive in this case. I think grocery leakage is, is our biggest retail problem. I, I do feel like we're, we are trying to be surgical and that economic development is only bringing to us deals that they feel are, are really important and, and of significant benefit to the community. And, and I, I feel like this is one of them.
Mr. Van Buren?
I'm probably going to take a stand on Mr. Hardy and believe that our public funds and these tax increments have to be so carefully done or they just become routine and expected. And I don't think we, we can do that. Not to say that Day's Market is not appreciated needed. In fact, I will continue to use my private funds as much as I can buying donuts there. I'm frequent there quite regularly, twice a week probably. And, but from a philosophical standpoint, I, I just can't support the tax increment on this, on this program, on this proposal. So I'll be voting against it.
Mr. Connect?
So we do need to be careful. I'll, I'll agree on that. We only have so much in the way of whether it be CDBG money or things we get from the feds or our own money to be incentivizing things. And, and you, if you want something to happen, you make it easy and you, and incentivize or reward it. In the last twenty years, we've lost numerous grocery stores. Two Reams, Storehouse, Allen's. There was like a Food for Less. Once upon a time, there was an Albertson's up on Canyon Road that BYU took out. There was a food store on Ninth East that's now a gym, some kind of exercise gym. And in that time, and there's a couple of others I'm not mentioning there, in the last twenty years, losing all of those, I can't really think of new ones that came to Provo and, and the ones that left. Instead of something new coming to Provo, we just saw more new ones pop up in, in Orem. So I think it's important to send a message here to grocery stores that they are wanted, whether they're established or ones that we would like to attract. And certainly we do want to attract more, especially in the southeast and southwest portions of our city. And there used to be a little grocery store in the southwest twenty years ago that disappeared and, and Smith's never appeared. So while I sympathize and kind of support both of my colleagues, I will be voting for this.
Any other comment? Okay, seeing none, we do have an implied motion. And that would be to approve the resolution. I will call for a vote. Those in favor? That would be those opposed. In favor is- That would be those opposed. In favor is Mr. Handley, Mr. Sewell, Mr. Winerton, Mr. Connect, and Mr. Stewart. Opposed, Mr. Van Buren and Mr. Harding. Thank you very much. Well, now, Mr. Harding.
Just a quick final thought. If the Day has brought forward a proposal to open a grocery store in west Provo, south, southeast Provo, I would be happy to vote for that one.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will now move to item number 12, an ordinance making proposed changes to the Provo City Code regarding downtown neighborhood. Oh, excuse me. Did I skip number 11? We'll go to an ordinance amending Provo City Code, Section 9.19090, possession and consumption of alcoholic beverages to include prohibition of tobacco use within parks and recreation facilities. And Sergeant Thomas will present this.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Chase Thomas. I'm the sergeant with the Provo City Police Department. I'm joined here tonight by Doug Robbins and Scott Henderson from the Parks and Rec Division. We're asking for an amendment to city ordinance, the alcohol ordinance, 9.19.090. It currently says that it shall be unlawful to possess alcohol within a city park. We're asking that be amended to include trails and recreation facilities, which this subsection would remain a Class B misdemeanor. We're also adding, requesting to add a subsection two, where it would be unlawful to use tobacco products, including e-cigarettes, within parks, trails, or recreation facilities. The reason for this, these are locations that have a large number of children and citizens that want to engage in activities that promote healthy lifestyles. We believe this ordinance would help promote the health, safety, and general welfare of our citizens, protect the environment from tobacco litter and pollution, and also preserve our family-friendly atmosphere in these locations. There's current laws already, state laws, including 7610-104, that makes it illegal to provide any form of cigarette to a minor. They've done this because it's harmful and unhealthy. 78B-6-1105 says that tobacco smoke legislation finds that the federal Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, has determined that environmental tobacco smoke is a Group A carcinogen in the same category as other cancer-causing chemicals such as asbestos. The EPA has determined that there is no acceptable level of exposure to Class A carcinogens, and the EPA has determined that exposure to environmental tobacco smoke also causes an increase in respiratory diseases and disorders among exposed persons. So, for that reason, we believe this ordinance should be amended so that we can keep these facilities and locations as a place to make it safe for families and individuals of all ages to gather and engage in activities.
Chair, could I just make a comment? You'll notice, looking at the one that's on the screen, there's a new subsection three that was not in your materials until today. That was a change that we were just made aware of yesterday that the administration had wanted to add. You may recall that by default, all violations of city code are a Class B misdemeanor. This addition would specify that violation of the alcohol prohibition is a Class B misdemeanor, but violation of the tobacco product subsection is a Class C misdemeanor rather than a Class B. And that is my understanding, is that that's the administration's proposal that they wanted to bring to the council. So, with that being the official recommendation from the administration, this is the version that the implied motion would apply to.
Mr. Harding.
I have a question for Sergeant Thomas or Brian Jones, whoever, or maybe both. In our work session, we talked about how e-cigarettes, a vast majority of the fluid that is filled into the e-cigarette is tobacco-based or has tobacco in it. But there was a comment that some of the fluids don't actually contain tobacco. Do we feel that this language, talking about including variations such as e-cigarettes, but relating to use of tobacco products, do we feel like an e-cigarette with something that's non, has something, doesn't have tobacco in it, would that be illegal as well? Because I think that would affect enforcement if someone can say, "Well, well, actually, what I'm using in this e-cigarette doesn't have tobacco."
I'm hoping that I'm not going to say something different than what somebody else in legal has already told Chase. But as I look at this, I would say that no, those would not be included because the specific unlawful prohibition is against tobacco products. And then the next clause is a modifying phrase that specifies certain kinds of tobacco products. So, we may need to look at that if we want to expand it to include more things. I don't know. Chase, did you, did that come up? Did somebody else tell you something?
So, it did come up. The state code 5914-802 defines electronic cigarette as any electronic device used to deliver or capable of delivering vapor-containing nicotine to an individual's respiratory system. So, that's the state's definition. It doesn't say that it has to be delivering nicotine. It says capable of delivering. And so, when we included e-cigarettes, it was to include that with the tobacco because if they contain nicotine, we know that's a highly addictive substance and that these are gateway substances to cigarette use, and it's increasing at a rapid rate among teenagers.
So, if that's the intent, my suggestion would be to specifically refer to that state code because as a matter of statutory interpretation, just because Utah code defines it that way doesn't mean it's defined the same way in our code. So, I think we'd need to include a cross-reference to that definition if that's what our intent is.
Mr. Sewell.
It seems like we might need to do a little more than that because it says here, specifically says it should be unlawful to use tobacco products, and then including variations such as e-cigarettes. So, I'm just not sure if the reference would be explicit enough. What's your opinion, Mr. Jones?
I agree. I think that we ought to tweak it just a little bit. Chase, can you tell me that code section again that you just cited?
Yeah, 59-14-802.
If the council doesn't mind, could I, could we ask Mr. Jones to do a little work on this one right now and see if it's possible to pass this one tonight with that, with this language? We could move on to item number 12. And then, or would we, or do you want to wait a week?
I think it's probably a question of your comfort level. I think I probably could craft an amendment while the next item's being discussed. But if you want some time to think about it for a week, that's fine, too.
Mr. Harding.
Let me attempt to do this, and Mr. Jones, correct me if I do this incorrectly. But I move that we table this item until after consideration of item 14 later in this meeting.
That is the correct way. My only hesitation is that's going to keep a couple of people here maybe longer than needed because I might be able to get it done faster.
May I amend my motion to table this item until...
Till I indicate I'm ready.
Until the revision is ready.
Thank you. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, those in favor? Mr. Stewart, did you vote for, oh, against. I better ask for a, he's in favor. Okay, thank you. That's unanimous. We will move on to item 12. Brian, let us know as soon as you're ready. An ordinance making proposed changes to Provo City Code regarding the downtown neighborhood. And Brian, how could we put you to work and still do this one?
I think Cliff can do this one.
Okay. Cliff, would you do this one then?
He's got the rest of them.
So, this one was discussed with council last meeting in the work session, and it simply has to do with changes that we've made to create two co-chairs essentially in the downtown neighborhood, one representing businesses and one representing residents. On any question that comes before the council affecting the downtown neighborhood.
Any discussion on this item? We'll open this one to public comment. Seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the council. We've had the discussion on this. Does any council member have any further discussion they would like to talk about on this one? Mr. Sewell.
Now that we have residents downtown, I'm glad that we're going to have a neighborhood chair to represent them. So, I think this is a good idea.
Thank you.
So, this is a long time coming, like a lot of good things. Takes a while to coalesce, and it's been good to see the ideas get vetted and mature and come out the way it did.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
I second that thought. I appreciate that we took a little extra time, and I really think this is a good solution and better than what some of the things we considered before. So, I'm glad that we got it right.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments? If not, we do have an implied motion on the table. We'll call for a vote if there's no further discussion. Those in favor? That passes unanimously. We will now move on to item number 13, a resolution ratifying the mayor's signature on the second amendment, addendum to the fifth amended interlocal corporation agreement by and between Provo City and Utah County relating to the ice sheet authority. And again, we are going to need Brian on this one. And Mayor, do you want to start us off? Is there anything that you would like to discuss on this one?
Just want to say thank you for coming along with us on this ride of getting this worked out. We appreciate it. And we feel, in the administration's office, we feel really confident that the Parks and Rec, Scott Henderson and his group will take this and far exceed any expectations we have and be a stellar ice skating rink that will get a lot of attention from around the country, similar to our rec center.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Maybe Mr. Strachan.
So, this ordinance simply extends, we've got the wrong one showing up right now still. But this item actually just extends the current interlocal agreement sufficient to provide the county with the opportunity to ratify the agreement next week. So, it's a technical change. Then, the next item after this will be council's ratification vote on the mayor's signature on the ice sheet agreement that was...
So, the way I understand it is that we extended it one month before, and that expires or expired on the 20 today? Or is it real close to today?
Whatever the date was, it's expired or expiring, and we need to extend it just enough time for the county to pass their vote.
So, the county can do that. Okay. That's what this one does. And so, we can deal with this one, I think, without Mr. Jones to start with. And then, when we get to item 14, we can deal with any questions around the agreement, and maybe the mayor can help us with that also. With that being said, we have an implied motion for item number 13. Oh, let's see. We will have public comment on the extension of this agreement. And then we will, again, if you want to talk about the agreement itself, we will wait for item number 14. Is there any public comment on relating to the extension of this agreement? Okay, seeing none, then we will close the public comment period, and we will go for, we will ask for a vote if there's no other discussion. Those in favor of extending? Thank you. That passes unanimously. We will now go to item 14, a resolution ratifying the sixth amended interlocal corporation agreement between Provo City and Utah County relating to the Provo City slash Utah County Ice Arena properties. And Mr. Jones, do you want to take a minute?
I am ready on number 11 as well. So, it's up to you which one you want to...
Let's move back to number 11, and then we can finish up with item number 14.
14, I think, might be a little bit longer.
That's freshest on your mind right now.
I am, let me, give me one second while I email Bryce the updated version so he can put it up on the screen. Okay, Bryce, that's on its way to you. And I can tell you in the meantime that the change that I made is to change it so that subsection two now says, "It shall be unlawful to use tobacco products of any kind and electronic cigarettes as defined in Utah Code, Section 59-14-802, within a city park, trail, or recreation facility." And I think that covers everything that we talked about. Now, as we talked in the back of the room, the one thing that this wouldn't capture, but that I'm not quite yet sure how to capture, and so I would recommend that even if you wanted to, we may want to take some time to do that later, would be a so-called vaping device that does not qualify as an electronic cigarette. And so, if there's a desire to include those, because there's some discussion that even those may serve as kind of an enticement or a gateway experience for youth, there may be some free expression issues, though, with even trying to capture those. So, again, I just want to put you on notice that those would not be included in what I've drafted here, but that my recommendation would be that if there's a desire to do so, that we do that as a second step later.
Mr. Harding.
My preference would be to implement this as written and then look to the police to let us know if they're running into problems with this scenario you just expressed. I do have one question. In item one, there's ors there, and in two, there's an and there. I'm wondering if that and should be an or or...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Makes it sound like it's, you can't use tobacco products and electronic cigarettes at the same time.
Yeah, it should be or.
Or, okay, thank you.
Bryce, yeah, can you change that to an or?
Mr. Handley.
With regard to the vaping, I sort of, I'd be very interested in exploring that further. I don't know as much about the health, the secondhand health effects of vaping, which might be highly relevant to that discussion. So, it seems like if we are going to explore that, I'd like to know more about that. I mean, one of the things in terms of like a gateway issue, I mean, so there's two issues I feel like we're talking about, the gateway issue and then the public health issue. And as far as a gateway issue, it seems to me that they're almost indistinguishable from regular cigarettes in terms of sort of the social function, right, and the appearance and so on. So, I think that would be a good conversation to have, but I would concur that I think doing so on a separate occasion is best.
Okay. So, we will need to have two motions then on this particular item.
Correct. So, the first motion would be to adopt the changes shown on the screen as part of the draft that would then be subject to the implied motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Handley, those in favor? Oh, any discussion first? Those in favor? That passes unanimously. So, we now have an implied motion on the table. Any discussion on the implied motion? Oh, thank you, Kay. Again, this is something, is there any public input with regard to this particular item?
Yeah, you all know me. I don't want to take up too much time. I just want to say that I'm in full support of the police department in this. I appreciate their efforts in keeping our community healthy and getting this stuff out of the public where it can cause harm to those around them. Thank you, police.
I also want to thank the police department, the Parks and Rec Department, and the citizen that brought this forward. This shows that, you know, individuals make a difference. And this was an individual that brought this forward. I think they started with the Parks and Rec and found out that... I think they started with the Parks and Rec and found out the police were already looking at some of these things, and so thank you very much to everyone involved. We do have an implied motion. We'll ask for that vote. Those in favor? That passes unanimously. Okay, we will now go to the final item on the agenda for tonight, and that is the item number 14, which has been read in. And, Mr. Jones, will you please give us some information on that?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Most of this information is, well, all of this information is information that the council has previously received, but Chair Winterton did ask me to do a little review of the agreement for the benefit of the public. So I would just say that as you're all aware, there is currently the Peaks Ice Arena that is being operated by the city but that is jointly owned by the city and the county through an interlocal entity called the Ice Sheet Authority. And the county, as a member of that Ice Sheet Authority, previously served on the city a little bit over 13 months ago, a notice of its intent to terminate its membership in the authority and to invoke the termination process, which could potentially lead to an auction of the Ice Sheet facility. And in fact, that's what the item number 13 was intended to do, was push the deadline for that auction taking place, for the triggering event for that auction, back a month in order to allow this next process to take place. So as you're also aware, the mayor has, Mayor Kafusi and the city have been engaged in extensive negotiations with the county about how to resolve this issue and hopefully keep the Ice Sheet facility running and do so in a way that is in the best interest of the public. So as of last Thursday, the mayor and the chair of the county commission have both executed a sixth amended interlocal agreement, which strives to do exactly that and resolve the issues that arose from the county's notice of termination. So the following are some of the deal points in that agreement. First of all, the agreement grants to the city all naming rights to the facility so that the city can name the Ice Sheet whatever the city desires to do so. It grants to the county, or to county residents, I suppose, a guarantee that county residents who are not also Provo residents, because Provo residents are county residents, will be charged the same fees and have the same access rights to the facility for the life of the agreement as Provo residents, to the degree that those rights are specific to the facility. There's also a provision in that says, to the degree that Provo comes up with some methodology where people that, where there's some kind of multi-facility pass that allows access to the Ice Arena, that those same rights wouldn't apply to a multi-pass methodology. One of the other deal points is that the budget for the 2017-2018 fiscal year will be amended to reduce the contribution from both the city and the county to $100,000 instead of $168,500, and that the county will pay that $100,000 to the city before the end of the fiscal year in order to satisfy its contribution for that fiscal year. Another deal point is that the value of the facility for the purposes of the agreement is established to be $9.9 million, and that the county and the city each will be just, well, let me back up and say it this way instead, that the Ice Sheet Authority will execute a warranty deed transferring the ownership of this facility to the county and the city as tenants in common, owning a 50% share each. It then establishes, because of that $9.9 million valuation that I just mentioned, that each of those shares, the city's share and the county's share, are therefore worth $4.95 million, and that the city, over the next 50 years, can reduce by various methods the county's, what we call the county's interest, or county's, county value in the agreement. And I'll mention in a moment what those ways are. In the meantime, for the first 10 years of the agreement, the county agrees to pay to the city $50,000 a year from its TRCC, or Tourism Recreation and Cultural Tax, and it agrees, it agrees to reserve sufficient funds to be able to do that in case the tax goes away, and it agrees that those funds will not be considered when making future grant funding and, or when considering future grant funding applications, and that the city will be treated under the same criteria as other cities that are eligible for such funds. I talked, in addition to the real property, which is going to be divided 50-50 by the deed, the Ice Sheet Authority will also transfer all other assets of the facility to the city. The city will have complete control, exclusive control, over the operation of the facility, and although the county has a right to inspect to make sure that its interest is being preserved, and the city may not intentionally devalue the property. The city is responsible for insuring the facility and for handling all of the liability for the facility, but must name the county as an additional insured in its insurance, again, to protect the city's remaining interest in the facility. If the facility is destroyed or damaged to an extent of more than $100,000, the city has the discretion as to whether the facility will be rebuilt or repaired, but if it decides not to rebuild it or repair it, then half of the insurance proceeds that are paid out have to go to the county up to a maximum of whatever their current interest is. So if more insurance is paid out than twice the county's interest, the city gets all of the excess. What else? Let's see. So let me talk briefly about the ability to buy down the county's interest. So the city does have the, the city also has the ability to sell the facility at any time, but if it does so, it must comply with state law in doing so, and the sale proceeds would be given to, half of the sale proceeds would be given to the county up to, again, their current, their current existing value in the facility. So ways that the county's value can be reduced are if there's an insurance payout, if there's a sale of the property, if there is, if it, let's see, I'm forgetting one, so let me look at the agreement itself. Well, the damage issue comes from the, let me look at here and get it, comes from the insurance. So, oh, by cash payments, the easy one. If the city makes cash payments between now and the end of the agreement, that reduces the county's value. If insurance payouts are made to the county, that reduces their value. If it's sold, that reduces their value actually to zero, and the agreement is terminated. If there's a breach of contract, it can be, well, no, if, for some reason, the county does not pay a portion of the $500,000 over the next 10 years, the city has the right to either sue them, to force them to pay it, or to, at the city's discretion, choose to reduce their value by the unpaid amount, if that makes sense. And then finally, if 50 years go by with nothing else happening, the city is obligated to buy the facility at the end of 50 years, but at that point and only at that point, the city's value would be reduced by up to $2.475 million. And it's a little bit complicated to explain how, but their value is reduced by half of what the city has spent on capital expenditures during that 50-year period, but only up to $2.475 million, which is half of the 4.95. Let's see, let me see if there's anything else. And I think that's, if, I guess, the one last provision that we spent a lot of time negotiating is that if either party believes that the one party has breached the agreement, they have to give them notice, and then there's a 120-day cure period for the other party to fix it. If it's not fixed, then they have the ability to sue or to terminate the agreement. And there's a limitation on damages section in there that probably isn't relevant to this discussion. But I guess I will just say, now that I brought that up, that the county, in the event that that ever happened and the county ever sued, they're, they are limited in their damages to whatever their current value is. So as we buy down their interest, they can't sue us for more than that, if that makes sense. And I think that's all the points I plan to mention, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Manby.
Brian, on that, the city has a right to sell. What did it say about the valuation when they sell? In other words, the city says, "We want to get rid of it, and the county doesn't agree with the amount that we're going to sell it for." How does that?
Well, so the provision question says, "City may sell the facility so long as the proposed cash sale is at least for fair market value and complies with the requirements of Utah law for the sale of public property." So Utah law regarding public entities requires that they sell their property for fair market value on the principle that it's a disservice to the taxpayers if they don't, right? So this provision requires us to sell it for fair market value. It's silent as to exactly how that would be determined, but what would essentially would happen is if, if the city went to sell the facility and felt like it had, was complying with state law and the county felt like they weren't, the county would have to sue to enjoin the city from selling it and claim that they had violated, that the proposed sale would violate state law if it was allowed.
After our Thursday great shakeout in Utah, I talked about the terms of, are we self-insured? Are we self-insuring this building? Should there be an earthquake? I know a lot of banks don't require earthquake insurance. Are we covered for that in that particular area? How does that work?
We are, and that may change, or at least the particulars of the insurance may change now that the city has more control over how it's insured. But I should, it's a little bit awkward, this is not awkward, but confusing, but let me put it this way. There's two, there's two ways that the city needs to think about the facility. One is as property, and one is as a source of liability. And the reason why I bring those up separately is because the city is not actually self-insured for property. For property, the city has insurance policies. Now, the deductible is half a million dollars, but all the city property is insured. And so going forward, the Ice Sheet would be city property and would be insured and is actually required by this agreement to include earthquake insurance, which the city's policy on all of our property already does, okay? Now, as to the self-insured question, what the city does is, to the extent that the city has liability, meaning that someone were to sue the city for doing something wrong or for being negligent in some way, for liability purposes, we are self-insured with what we call a self-insured retention of $500,000, and then we have what's called an excess liability insurance policy above and beyond that. Now, for purposes of the, of public consumption, those two methodologies are really essentially the same for the public. The major difference is that for property insurance, where we have an insurance policy with a deductible, the city does not handle the claims, the insurance company does. But for self-insurance for liability, the city handles the claim, and the excess liability insurer is just there to step in with coverage, but not with the processing, if that makes sense. So, sorry if that was too much detail.
No, that was helpful. Any other questions? Mr. Harding?
Hmm, mine's not really a question, so I guess I should, we haven't taken this to public comment.
No, we have not taken it to public comment.
I will hold then.
Okay. We will then open it for public comment. Seeing no public comment, anything from Parks and Rec, who are going to be taking this thing over in a couple of weeks? Awesome, thank you. Okay, we will bring this back to the council, and now, Mr. Harding, you have a statement.
I just wanted to say thanks to the mayor, and well done on the negotiations. That's a great job, and a big thank you and shout out to our Parks and Rec department for the way that they've managed this and other facilities that has, have put us in this position that we could negotiate for this.
And the attorney's office. I think this has been a real challenge, and I'm grateful for the efforts on both sides that have, and the way it's turned out. Thank you.
Let me just add to that. I appreciate the mayor and her team for really making an effort to build back the relationship with the county, and I feel like we're making good progress there, and grateful for that.
Mr. Chair? Yes. Just for the sake of clarification, because I was asked this by one of the reporters, I should clarify that even though the agreement has already been signed, by its own terms, it doesn't actually take effect until ratified by the legislative bodies of both entities. So that's what's before the council tonight, right now, is ratifying the agreement and the mayor's execution of it. My understanding is that the county commissioners will vote on that, on that same question on May 1st.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we have an implied motion. Any discussion on that implied motion? Seeing none, we will ask for a vote. Those in favor? Thank you very much. That passes unanimously, and we will close this meeting with a motion by consent. Thank you for coming. Thanks for all your work today.